I'm Zokamatio Mateo. I call this meeting on October 6, 2025 at 7:00 PM. We will start with our land acknowledgement. The City of Albany recognizes that we occupied the land originally protected by the Confederate villages of Lishan. We acknowledge the genocide that took place on these lands. Must make strides to repay the moral debt that is owed to this indigenous people, specifically the Aloney tribe. Thank them for their contributions which have transformed our community and will continue to bring forth growth and unity. The City of Albany commit to sustaining an ongoing relationship with the tribe and together build a better future for all that now make this their home. Welcome, Sparky. City Clerk, roll call, please.
Councilmember Hansom Ramaro.
Here.
Councilmember Jordan.
Here.
Councilmember Mickey.
Here.
Vice Mayor McQuaid.
Here.
Mayor Lopez.
Here. We will start off with ceremonial matters, proclamation, child read, National Fire Prevention Week, which will be received by our guest to honor this evening, Sparky. All right, well, thank you, Sparky, for being here. You've been a really good dog and we want to acknowledge. In recognition of National Fire Prevention Week, October 5th to 11th, 2025, whereas the City of Albany is committed to ensuring the safety and security of all those living in and visiting our community, and whereas fire remains a serious public safety concern both locally and nationally, and the presence of lithium ion batteries and many household devices introduces unique fire risk, and whereas most of the electronics used in homes daily, including smartphones, tablets, laptops, power tools, e-bikes, e-scooters, and toys are powered by lithium ion batteries, which if misused, damaged, or improperly charged can overheat, start a fire, or explode. And whereas residents should follow three calls to action, three key calls to action: Buy only listed product, charge batteries safely and recycle them responsibly to prevent battery-related fires. And whereas lithium ion batteries store a large amount of energy in a small space, and improper use such as overcharging, using off-brand chargers without safety certification, or exposing batteries to damage can result in fires or explosion. And whereas the proper disposal and recycling of lithium ion batteries can help prevent environmental hazards and reduce fire risks in the home and community. And whereas the City of Albany's Fire Department is dedicated to reducing the occurrence of fires through prevention, safety education, and community outreach. And whereas the 2025 Fire Prevention Week theme, Charge Into Fire Safety: Lithium Ion Batteries in Your Home, serves to remind us the importance of using, charging, and recycling lithium ion batteries safely to reduce the risk of fires in our homes and community. Now therefore, be it proclaimed that the Albany City Council hereby recognizes October 5th through 11th, 2025, as Fire Prevention Week in the City of Albany. Sparky, I don't know if you have any words, but I know our Fire Chief is here.
Mayor, thank you very much.
My pleasure.
All right. It is that time of year to focus and concentrate on being as fire safe as possible. That's a daily experience, especially here in Albany. We don't have many fires and I think that speaks to the commitment of our community to make sure they're fire safe. As we're moving forward into the era of more and more electronically powered, not just computers and such, but bikes, vehicles, and all of those parts of our lives, it's really important, and this is to remember the key themes of this year's theme from Fire Prevention Week, Charge Into Fire Safety. So, as mentioned by the Mayor, buy listed batteries and go from a good source, especially from the manufacturer of whatever that device is that you're buying a new battery for. Charge them properly, and then recycle. There's spots that you can find on StopWaste.org. And then also from Waste Management, you can put the batteries in a clear sealed bag on top of a closed recycle bin. Okay, so we're on top. So that's the other way that you can also recycle the batteries properly. With that, I want to remind everyone that we're going to have a celebration of Fire Prevention Week at the Firehouse this Saturday. It's the world-famous Albany Fire Department Pancake Breakfast. It starts at 8:00 AM. We would like to remind you to, we try to make it as sustainable as possible, so bring your own cutlery and eatingware if you can. If not, we have sustainable, I forget the right way to say it, but we have the right type of environmentally friendly foodware to enjoy amazing pancakes, the best pancakes in Albany, I must say. We'll also have some educational spots to teach and reinforce how important it is to be fire safe, how to be fire safe, stop dropping old competition, a fire extinguisher prop, so you can actually practice putting it on a fire. And we even have a digital one, so we won't be leaving a footprint into the environment to teach fire safety. So we just got that this year. We'll also be partnering with other parts of our city. It's going to be a city resource mini fair. So we'll also have the Police Department out with information about the Police Department. We'll have the other departments within the city available to our citizens and those who enjoy the breakfast to come learn more and more about what we do here in local government. So thank you for your support. It's an honor to serve this community and look forward to seeing everybody Saturday, 8:00 AM, at the Firehouse.
Do we have any words from members on council?
I have a question.
Yes.
Do people have to be there at 8:00 AM?
Do they have to be there at?
People have to be there at 8:00 AM to get their pancakes?
No, it's from 8:00 to noon.
Okay.
So come at your leisure.
Brunch is also served.
Brunch is also served. And we've served breakfasts up as late as 5 minutes to 12:00, so.
Right on, okay.
If you're there, we want to get the opportunity to meet you, provide a really great breakfast, and then provide some education and a chance to meet your Fire Department. Believe all of the members of the Fire Department will be there, either on duty or coming in volunteering their time because it means that much to us to get a chance to shine with our community and relate to them. So it's gonna be fun.
Thanks to the department.
I see we have a comment from the public as well.
Yeah, Kathy Rice, 709 Madison Street. Hi, guys. I just wanted to commend you for being so patient, so understanding, and so kind through the years I've been a resident there. Because I grew up in Pennsylvania. We're used to just burning leaves without a permit. So you could take the girl out of Pennsylvania, but there I was. And then I see your truck coming up and you guys were just so sweet and just commenting on how nice my plants are. But I clearly was doing a no-no, so. Thank you. Thanks for being you. I really appreciate you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. And thank you again, Fire Chief, and department personnel, and of course, Sparky. I'd be remiss if we didn't acknowledge you, Sparky. Thank you for accepting the proclamation this evening.
All right, take care of y'all.
Take care. All right, moving right along, we will move on to, excuse me, move on to City Manager's report. City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. I have a visual this evening, so just one visual, but something we're very proud of that occurred this weekend with Dinner with Albany. Thank you for those that could attend. We had about 2,000 people in attendance of our community who joined us for the event. And it was at Memorial Park this year, a transition from the previous event style, and was a fantastic event, is really all I can say about it. You get a glimpse of it here. You can see kind of half of the event. The other half is on the other side of the trees with tables and amazing decorations and just great community energy. So really appreciate all of the staff time that went into planning and organizing this event through our Recreation and Community Services staff. They were smiling the whole night somehow, which was really, really sweet to see. So I can't thank them enough because it was months of work to get that together without a hitch. Really was a fantastic event, so looking forward to seeing what comes next. I'd also like to give an update on something that we've received quite a few concerns about regarding Ocean View Park and the proposal to add or improve the existing volleyball court area. Absolutely appreciate all the comments that have been received and the communication we've received. As we are saying back to those emails now, we've heard the comments and are taking the time to do some more work around this project to further analyze locations throughout the city to really understand the best opportunity we may have for potential volleyball court installation. This will take time to do and it will take more analysis and we will continue to report back as that work comes underway. But again, in terms of any project at Ocean View Park right now for volleyball, that will be on hold. Update from our Police Department. They have completed a crisis intervention training. This training equips officers with skills to respond to individuals safely and effectively in mental health crisis through de-escalation, communication, and connection to appropriate resources. And appreciate the team for taking the time to get 100% trained in this important topic area. As you may recall, at an earlier meeting of the council, priority conservation areas were approved by the council and these have gone through the Bay Area Government Executive Board who have approved them. Our four priority conservation areas include Albany Hill, Albany Bay Trail Waterfront Recreation, Albany Bay Trail Waterfront Recreation and Climate Resilience, and the Priority Tree Canopy area of street tree management. Appreciation to staff for all the work they did in seeing that through and looking forward to next steps with those priority conservation areas. As you just saw, Sparky was here. The Fire Department, in addition to the pancake breakfast, is also busy doing some engagement around Albany Hill wildfire preparedness, specifically postcard survey to residents of that community and property owners to understand their approach to wildfire preparedness, their interest in the topic area and how to collaborate better together moving forward in helping with insurance concerns and whatnot. So looking forward to getting some additional community engagement around that topic. Our Police Department sent out a notification. And as a reminder, October is Crime Prevention Month. Please be aware of your surroundings as always, but even more during Crime Prevention Month. Get to know your neighbors, know when folks are coming and going. A lot more safety tips from the department can be found at albanyca.gov/news. I don't need to talk about the pancake breakfast. Our chief just did, but I will give it another plug anyway. It's this Saturday, October 11th, at the Firehouse. And in addition, as the chief mentioned, we will have an open house here in City Hall, primarily in this room, but also our lobby area, with a number of city staff from different departments here to engage with the community and talk about current project areas. Let's see, and textile collection recap. If you were out during Waste Management Collection Days during that September 22nd to 26th period, it was really well received and a lot of participation. This was the first ever of those events and Waste Management will be looking to do another one next year. For this very short timeframe, there were 625 participating locations and a little over 1,200 bags were collected, equating to 8.42 tons in weight. Again, textiles are, you know, old clothes, blankets, whatnot, something that's hard to really manage through the regular landfill. So this really helps with that challenge of further diversion. And that completes my report. Thank you.
Thank you, City Manager. Do we have any questions from members on council?
I don't have a question, but I just want to add my thanks to all of the staff for the incredible evening we had Saturday night. It was absolutely amazing. It was everything we'd hoped for, I think. And I just really want to convey my thanks to all of you.
Thank you, and I think we can all echo those sentiments. Really appreciate what city staff was able to pull off. To me, my chief of staff never had a moment in which he was bored. And I believe fellow councilmember John Mickey is very much aware of that. Also, not a question on my end, but just, you know, I want to applaud our Police Department for always being on top of things and being responsive to our community. Without going into details, they did put out their public notice on a recent incident. I really do appreciate that. Our community feels comfortable enough working with our Police Department. And I just want to echo what our City Manager has stated, that it is absolutely important in our community to be able to work with each other and know your neighbors. Events like Dinner with Albany truly help facilitate that and getting to know names and faces and familiarity with the landscape. But much credit to our Police Department for being very proactive. That said, do we have any questions from members in the public regarding the City Manager's report?
Mayor, I'm sorry, I forgot to point to the murals on both sides of City Hall this evening, which are also an outcome of community working together and enjoying time together at Dinner with Albany. These were sort of paint-by-number murals, blank canvases at the time, just sketched out. And so the paint came in through participants of the event, so really cool to see them here. We will use them in many ways going forward.
Thank you. Do we have any questions from members of the public regarding the City Manager's report? Any online? All right, move right along. We will go to item number six, Good to the City, Public Comment. The comment is limited to three minutes and items discussed during public comment cannot be discussed by council due to Brown Act protocol. City Clerk?
Stephen, Ishan, and Joe.
Good evening. Councilmembers and many Albany residents know that I am Dr. Stephen Alpert. And I'm here to ask why Albany adheres to the absolute minimum state mandate of only alerting those within 300 feet of proposed new construction by postcards mailed but 10 days before our first project hearing. Moreover, Albany does not require that signs be posted at the project site detailing the proposed construction. Over the past two years, my wife and I and over a dozen individuals have requested that the council consider expanding public notification beyond 300 feet as enacted by many other California municipalities. To date, the council has refused to address this item, this issue. Alerting only those within 300 feet clearly limits public discourse, allowing the Planning and Zoning Commission to propose and the council to then push through new projects, no matter how inappropriate, with minimal awareness and input from the public. Such was the case for the oversized five-story modern box poster, 1600 Solano. Clearly, 1600 Solano is not functionally appropriate nor harmonious with the surrounding Craftsman-era buildings in total violation of Albany's Planning and Zoning Mission Statement, shown here. Of note, councilmembers Mickey Lopez and Hansom Ramaro were not on the council in 2022 when Solano, 1600 Solano was approved. And then Councilwoman McQuaid appropriately objected to the project and called for further discussion, as did several other Albany residents. Over the course of five months, select city officials initially refused to provide the existing state laws which purportedly precluded expanded notification. As documented in the ordinances of the cities of Burbank and Irvine, while clearly not settled, let's assume, as Councilman Jordan and Yimby Law assert, that uniform noticing distances are required. Accordingly, the issue of varied notification based on project size is no longer a matter of contention. Uniform notice greater than 300 feet for all new construction seems appropriate. There is no legal reason whatsoever preventing Albany from expanding public notification for new construction, and the council has run out of excuses as to why you refuse to address this issue. If this current council genuinely believes that alerting only those within 300 feet for all new construction is appropriate 10 days before our first project hearing, then defend that practice. Submit 300-feet notification as a meeting agenda item to allow for extended, in-depth public discussion. Why does the council refuse steadfastly to do this? Albany deserves better than the absolute minimum. Thank you for your time. Time to address the council.
Thank you for your comment.
Hi, good evening, councilmembers. My name is Ishan and I appreciate that a couple of the councilmembers already reached out and support our effort to suspend this project at Ocean View Park. And I'm here to update you on the community's strong opposition to the proposed sand volleyball court at Ocean View Park. And I personally have collected over 300 signatures. And with at least three other residents scalying on their own, totally opposition now exceed 500 signatures, just to update you all on this sort of finding. And this is a clear proof that this project does not reflect community consensus. And we are all shocked that there were no community outreach during the process committees' design process. And so hopefully going forward, now we're suspending this project, that, you know, you really consider that, you know, more community outreach and then there's transparency. So everybody's all on the same page, so there's no miscommunication and such. And we all support youth sport, but the issue isn't sand volleyball, it's the location, right? Ocean View Park is already a heavily-used space. The picnic area, children's play structure, redwood grove, tennis pickleball courts, commuter garden, and softball, baseball field, all sharing limited parking and passway. Removing one of the few remaining open green spaces for single-four-person team sport is simply not sound planning. And importantly, there is no comparable parkland west of San Pablo Avenue where residents also deserve equitable access to green space. Some might claim that this project promotes gender equity, but the Fair Play Act applied to organized athletic programs, not informal installation like the one we're proposing here. True equity means balancing access to everyone while also protecting our environment. Simply upgrading the existing grass volleyball area with a permanent net would achieve both that, preserving green space and also provide, you know, equal access to girls or youths who want to play, you know, lone volleyball there at this rare green meadow. So finally, I think we can all say that we should support youth recreation, but not at the expense of our redwood grove or our last open meadow. Please relocate the court to a more suitable, sustainable site and instead invest those tax dollars in restoring and aerating the green meadow, helping our redwoods continue to thrive for future generations of Albany residents.
Thank you for your comment.
Thank you for your time.
Hello, councilmembers. My name is Joe Materia. I'm a resident of Albany. I live on Jackson Street. And I'm here to also support removing the Ocean View Park Meadow from consideration as a site for each volleyball court. There are other possible locations. For example, I don't know all the details of whether it'll work or not, but Albany Beach, which is only about six minutes further by bicycle, it would be worth investigating this and other possible sites that would make more sense for this use. The Ocean View Meadow is about the only unprogrammed, flat, open space. Still, that's west of San Pablo Avenue in Albany. And those of us who live in the area don't want to lose this rare space. It's a little peaceful, green sanctuary next to an amazing redwood grove, which itself is threatened by the construction of a sand volleyball court since construction would require excavating three-feet-deaths of soil and redwood roots, since the roots grow horizontally for 50 or so feet for the sand and a drainage system. You should also know, as it just stated, that there are two permanent volleyball poles already installed for grass volleyball in this meadow. The city, just by providing a net, could have volleyball available for informal games without destroying the meadow and endangering the redwoods. Up to 12 people at a time could play on the current court, but beach volleyball is only a two-person-on-a-team sport, so only four play at a time. The location just doesn't make sense anyway for sand volleyball since it's played barefoot and the redwoods would be constantly dropping their needles into the sand, which you'd have to be constantly picking them up and filtering them out of the sand if you're playing barefoot. Not to mention cats using it as a litter box. So I guess finally, you know, please let us keep our green meadow. As I've just stated, maybe just put some resources into planting grass and aerating the soil to benefit the trees, but please don't take the meadow away. Thanks.
Thank you for your comment. Need no applause?
Thanks so much. I appreciate that City Manager Nicole did mention that there is going to be more analysis happening. I am a licensed structural professional engineer and also lead accredited professional. So I am also a leader of the Asian Parents Engagement Group and also a member of the Albany Climate Coalition. So I did talk to Julia Chang-Frank about, and she did address some of the issues. So even as a licensed engineer, I think it'd be useful, instead of this kind of an adversarial, "I don't want it, da-da-da, and this is why", I'm proposing, and I think the leaders of both groups could co-host a forum so that we can have subject matter experts as panelists so that anybody who cares about the courts on either side can hear what the reasoning is instead of just having it come out of the blue and then say, "Well, it's bad because of this." But at least it'll be a discussion because the common ground is nobody wants to see the redwood trees die. And there are mitigating factors. And I think this is something that's worth having a discussion as a public forum with the support of the City of Albany if we can host this because I've seen that done for things such as Prop 37 hosted at the Little Theater at the Albany High School. So if we can have an honest dialogue where everybody feels heard and all of the issues are actually sussed out by the subject matter expert because we do have landscape architects on both sides and we do have answers for every single one of those points that are in opposition. So frankly, by the time I heard both sides, I was pretty jumbled up. And I would like the opportunity to maybe even moderate so I can ask follow-up questions to both of those because I did look at both sides as a professional engineer. So thank you so much. Oh, and yeah, I'll talk about the bio swales for the Brighton Sewer Project later. So thanks for listening. I appreciate your time and kind attention.
Thank you for your comment.
Actually, I do want to use the last minute. I totally get what the issue is about not being told because if we want to change anything about the front of our property, we need to send out postcards to every single one of our neighbors on the block. So the fact that this is something that's so cherished by so many residents and none of us heard about it because there is a regular email blast where we do learn about the pancake breakfast, we learn about Dinner with Albany. It would have been nice to get notice about that for something like this. Thank you.
Hi, my name's Jean Wu and I'm a longtime resident of the City of Albany and I also am a member of the Albany Climate Action Coalition. And I'm here to talk about the Resilience Hub concept, which I think was introduced over two months ago at the Albany Climate Action Committee, I believe that's called. over two months ago at the Albany Climate Action Committee, I believe that's called. And there was some discussion about working something out with AVA and doing a survey with AVA and then trying to get AVA Community Energy to do more of a technical evaluation of what might be necessary and then also to be considered for the funding that AVA Clean Energy or Community Energy is providing for community resilience hubs in both Alameda and San Joaquin Counties. So I think that's something that should not be dropped. We should move on it. It's a little later now than it was two months ago, but my feeling is that nothing really definitive will happen until January. And if we could get all the little pieces in place and have an understanding of what the community wants by maybe doing some kind of a survey, then we would be in better position to work with AVA Community Energy's advisors. They have expert advisors that they're hired to help develop such a site. The other thing I'm interested in is that there has been a relatively recent grant proposal for electric vehicle charging hubs that includes both the Level 2 and the Level 3 hubs. And they're providing a fair amount of money for both, the Level 2 and Level 3, but they want something that's going to be ready to put in soon. And so a discussion has been going online and apparently somebody was saying, I think it was the city manager's side, was saying that their Toyota site at the end of Buchanan might be interested, but I'm hoping that there is some effort put into putting something closer to the downtown section like at Safeway or CVS and that we have an equal number of Level 2 and Level 3 chargers so that people who want to charge quickly can, but people who want to spend a little more time and get to know the neighborhood would have that option as well. And if it's possible to get that funded by CEC, that would be fantastic. So I would just really push to get that happening since we really do not have any public EV charging in the city now. Thank you so much.
Thank you for your comment.
Hi, this is Catherine. Just want to say I agree with the previous comments relating to the concern about the sand volleyball courts causing the redwood trees to die. And I want us to prioritize our aforementioned climate action goals to contain green spaces and open space, particularly in areas that have less park access for equity reasons. And appreciate you taking the time to consider these comments. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. All right, that concludes the public comment section. We will move on to item number seven, consent calendar.
I could make a comment, Mayor. So one of the commenters asserted that the city was in violation of its policy in approving 1600 Solano because it was not architecturally harmonious. And I just want to relay that California Government Code 66300B1C prohibits cities from considering subjective standards such as architectural harmoniousness in deciding whether to approve project planning applications like that for 1600 Solano.
Thank you, Councilmember Jordan. We will now move on to item number seven, consent calendar. Items on the consent calendar are considered routine and can be enacted by motion unless anyone chooses to pull an item from the calendar. Do any members of council wish to pull an item?
I'd like to pull seven five.
Seven five, the additional item. And I will pull item seven four. Do any members of the public wish to pull an item?
Same thing, seven five.
Seven five, okay. We'll start with seven four. I just want to extend appreciation to Councilmember Jordan for helping to get that letter going and try to get some accountability and some understanding on what's happening there. So we appreciate it.
Thank you, Mayor. It was a labor of love for sure, so I appreciate that.
Not seeing any further discussion on seven four. Seven five, Councilmember Mickey.
Is this about the sewage project? Okay, yeah. So I remembered reading about it and it's Brighton Avenue, which is near the Albany Middle School. And I actually met the CEO of the company that actually did the bio swales for the middle school, which is a really wonderful space that the kids could actually go because it's an educational component where there's an actual poster talking about the benefits of the bio swale. I'm wondering if the sewage project has any plans to put those kinds of things in place so that it can continue that good trend of being good practices and best practices because bio swales make the water board happy, they make flood control happy. Kids actually strangely just go and have lunch there because they just feel better. So in terms of, I also did a presentation on urban mini-forrests at the Albany Library last Sunday. So there are a lot of opportunities to add more greenery and it could even be as small as one parking lot size and we can start greening and reduce the heat island effect. So thank you so much for considering this. This is, I think I'd probably get in touch with Public Works or whoever else it is. But Ms. Ann, you have my email, so if I'm able to collaborate with them, I'd be grateful. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. And I could definitely attest to the benefits of bio swales and the connectivity that produces for communities. I've seen that work wonders in my hometown of Richmond, California, along the Richmond Greenway, and the educational component that we have there as well. Councilmember Mickey? Or do we have someone?
I believe there was another public comment. I thought Catherine had mentioned that she wanted to comment on. Okay. So.
There we go.
Hand twister.
Okay. Yeah, so I guess I did have a question to staff, if staff had looked at the possibility of bio swales. And I might have some follow-up questions, but that was kind of question one.
Sure. Okay, this is working. Good evening. I wasn't expecting to talk bio swales with a sewer project, but I'm putting my thoughts together a little bit. So this project does not include bio swales. This project is part of our city's consent decree with the EPA to reduce INI in our sewer systems. We have very prescriptive yearly requirements for rehabilitation. This is part of this year's requirements. And we must finish the project before the end of the year. And so we are expediting through, this is a very complicated project. It is also funded by an enterprise fund, which does not allow us to exceed the auspices of what the enterprise fund is, which is sewer. So we would have to be pulling in funding from other funding sources. So on the funding side, that means the MPDES fees, which are heavily drawn on. And we are looking to, kind of on a big picture, we have a required green infrastructure project by 2027, and we are actively working on that to try to tailor that in a way that fits with active transportation changes at Santa Fe and Key Route intersection under the Santa Fe Traffic Calming Project. So this is active work separate from the sewer project. Outside of that, I kind of want to talk a little bit about just the magnitude of what a bioretention basin in a congested corridor entails. So Brighton Avenue is a 30-foot roadway with about seven to 10-foot at most sidewalk space behind walk space. In that 50-foot right-of-way, we have a waterline transmission, a local waterline distribution, a gas transmission, a gas, local gas distribution. We have a sewer. We have two duck banks for communications, major duck banks. And these are all at the elevation where bioretention infiltration would be happening. So it's very complicated to put in. And I would say Brighton Avenue, at least in the right-of-way in this section, is probably not one where we're going to be able to put the green type of bioretention. At a certain point, we may need to put in permeable paving as part of requirements that are triggered by paving projects. But a bioretention basin is generally three to five feet deep, depending on how much space we have. In this case, we also are actively looking on the ATP about active transportation benefits. And unfortunately, I think this has been said before, but every square inch of Albany has been reserved three or four times over. And so when we want to build bioretention basins, we really need to be looking not just at the single project, but making sure that we're looking across all our different programmatic needs and priorities across the city, both on the funding side and on the space consideration side. I'm happy to respond to any other questions.
You managed to answer my follow-up question, so, in your response. I really want to thank you because I recognize that even just looking at the above-ground space, knowing that that's a pretty congested area for all that we're asking those narrow right-of-ways to do, knowing that as engineers, you guys are looking at everything underground, which most of us never get a chance to understand fully what's under there, I appreciate that you were able to date like that and let us all understand that. I also want to thank staff because I know, as we have talked over the years, you are always looking for these opportunities, knowing that it's a possibility. But I think the two keys I wanted to just emphasize were that we are on a court-mandated timeline and that we have funding that will disappear if we don't use it. So not only will we lose the funding, but we would also not be in compliance with the EPA mandate. And Brighton and the neighboring streets are already doing a lot. I like looking at Portland and Washington, though, as potentials in the future. I'll keep mentioning these. You've heard me say this before, but those are wider streets.
If I can jump in, of all the utilities I mentioned, stormwater is not one of the ones we have a true stormwater system. We have shallow cross drains only. That is another consideration for bioretention basins is we really want to be able to tie into a true stormwater system to make sure that we take care of the water that comes in. And I wanted to take this opportunity to plug that we are actively working on a watershed management plan update. And that's where these discussions on funding for some of these green infrastructure, for the kind of supporting infrastructure that we need in order to do stormwater improvements, these are all going to be kind of discussed and probably ad nauseam through this upcoming project and presentations that we're hoping to bring next spring, starting next spring.
Thank you. I look forward to that discussion because I've often said I geek out about streets. I'm really excited about the opportunities of daylighting some rain gardens and the potential for improving the habitat for our street trees. Thank you, staff.
Thank you again. All right, I will entertain a motion at this time.
I'll move consent.
I'll second, and I want to thank the city CIP manager for education on the fly. Thanks very much.
City Clerk.
Councilmember Jordan.
Yes.
Councilmember Mickey.
Yes.
Vice Mayor McQuaid.
Yes.
Mayor Lopez.
Yep.
Councilmember Hansa Romero.
Yes.
The motion carries.
Thank you very much, City Clerk. Moving on to item number nine, public hearing, amendment to Albany's municipal code. City Staff.
So good evening, Mayor, council members, and members of the public. My name is Mirhan, Associate Planner with the City, Planning and Building Manager, Leslie Mendez, and I are here to present tonight some amendments to our planning and zoning code related to, as the title says there, residential uses and care facilities. So yes, these amendments seek to achieve mainly two purposes. One is to implement readily achievable housing element programs. So those are listed there in the green, light green box, and we'll go into more detail in later slides. And the second purpose is to align our code with state law. So to reflect changes to state law related to family daycare homes included in Senate Bill 234. Again, we'll go over these in more detail. But before we dive into these proposed amendments, a little bit of background on them. So first of all, on September 10th, 2025, staff brought the proposed amendments in front of Planning and Zoning Commission, and their recommendation from Planning Commission was the city council adopt an ordinance amending Chapter 20 of the Albany Municipal Code with the proposed changes. Now, as you were able to see on the staff report, the proposed amendments included updates as well to the ADU ordinance to comply with recent changes to state law. And so recently, city council received a letter from the Californian Housing Defense Fund, which is a housing advocacy group, raising some concerns about certain provisions of the city's ADU ordinance that may not be in compliance with state law. So with that, taking that into account and bearing in mind that there's a series of ADU legislative updates that are sitting on the governor's desk waiting to be signed in the near future, staff proposes that all amendments related to ADUs be removed from city council consideration and action tonight, and that staff will return with comprehensive updates to the ADU ordinance at a later date to reflect all the recent changes to state law. All right, so starting with the implementation, our first purpose, right, for these amendments is to implement our housing element. So the first program is, as we can see here, Program 1A, Single Family Zoning Reform. It is included under the Housing Element Goal of Equitable Access to Housing, which is to revise a single-family zoning, R1, to allow for a greater mix of housing types and increased access to affordable housing opportunities in Albany's residential neighborhoods. So in order for, to align or to implement this program, staff recommends to eliminate language designating the R1 district exclusively for single-family homes and ADUs. So that's the First Amendment, to eliminate that language. And by doing that, this would provide the flexibility to construct different types of dwelling units that would fill in the need for the missing middle housing types and not only single-family homes in the R1 district within, of course, development standard allowances and regulations. And then the second program, Housing Element Program, which is included in Goal 3, Special Housing Needs, provides directive to lower regulatory barriers for large residential care facilities. It also recommends to recognize group homes as a use allowed in all residential zones. So following this directive, the amendments propose to eliminate barriers for these larger residential care facilities. So these barriers would be in regarding to spacing requirements and discretion levels. And second is to add a definition of group homes that aligns with state law and treats them as a household or as a residential use. So by doing these, implementing these changes, we would be complying or implementing these two housing element programs. All right. And the third Housing Element Program to implement is Program 3H, also included in the Special Housing Needs Program, a goal. It includes some recommended changes to the zoning code related to the following residential uses. So one is the Low Barrier Navigation Centers, or LBNCs, single-room occupancy housing, SROs, and employee housing. So the following amendments are proposed to implement this program. One is to add a definition for low-barrier navigation centers, a definition that mirrors the statutory definition, and allow them by right in any area zoned for mixed use or non-residential that permits multifamily housing. So in our case, this would be the Solano Commercial and the San Pablo Commercial Districts. And let's see, so the other one would be to, consistent with the program recommendation, change SROs from requiring a use permit to being allowed by right in the San Pablo Commercial District, adding them as a by-right use as well in the Solano Commercial District. In addition, all SROs In addition, all SROs are considered a residential use. And lastly, this Housing Element Program 3H includes recognizing employee housing as a residential use. However, since employee housing shares the same characteristics as a household, as any residential household, creating separate sets of regulations or definitions for employee housing was deemed unnecessary by staff at this point. All right. And then, let's talk about state law implementation. So we're talking about Senate Bill 234, which is, is also known as Keeping the Kids Close to Home Act, which was passed in 2019 to address the supply shortage for childcare facilities in our state. To comply, staff recommends removing all regulatory zoning and procedural barriers for family daycare homes and treat them as residential uses. So these include discretion levels, spacing, parking, noticing, and hearing requirements, all of them would be removed per state law. Okay, so as mentioned before, so we'll talk a little bit about two pieces of correspondence or public comment that council received. One came from an Albany resident expressing support for these amendments and suggesting that in the future, we should consider to allow higher residential densities to address the current housing crisis. The other is the letter that I previously mentioned from the California Housing Defense Fund on some of the provisions included in the ADU ordinance. So again, taking that into account, along with the likelihood of seeing new ADU legislation being signed soon, staff recommends council to introduce and waive the first reading of Ordinance Number 2025-07, adopting amendments to the Planning and Zoning Code related to residential use and residential care facilities with the following modifications. So the first one was, would be to remove, as you can see there on the slide, reference in the ordinance title, reference to accessory dwelling units. So snapshot is shown there, and it would be from line, line six. All right. So the next recommendation would be to delete from the ordinance, reference to ADUs in the fourth whereas, or section on page one, line 25, and you can see that reference to accessory dwelling units has been, is stricken out. And then the third is to delete current Section 7 from the ordinance, page four, lines 25 to 27, and enumerate current sections eight to 10 accordingly. Last but not least, our recommendation would be to delete reference to the ADU ordinance amendments in the current Exhibit G, page five, as well as the exhibit itself, and relater Exhibits H to J accordingly. With that, our presentation concludes. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Do we have any questions from council at this time? Start with you, Councilmember McKee.
It's just gonna be, like, just gonna be my heavy place all night, talking about streets, talking about ordinances. So all joking aside, I really want to thank staff for pulling all these edits together. I did have one clarifying question. So when it comes to the child daycare facilities, you mentioned all regulatory zoning. When, is that, is that removing any building code elements that a childcare facility would have to, you know, meet the building code?
All new construction in the city has to be, meet current building code standards.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Jordan.
Yes, and staff may not be able to address this now, which I would understand, but the council received email, I would say, three months ago, but my time is not great, regarding what I guess would be considered a family daycare that was not permitted in the city, and so I'm wondering if that daycare would now become permitted with these proposed changes. So it was an operating, only daycare, or daycare that was operating in a, otherwise would be described as a house in a neighborhood, and I guess the city moved to essentially shut it down for being a disallowed use. So, again, I don't know that you'd be able to address it here. I'll send email if you can, but, yeah.
I'm not familiar specifically with that, and, but we could look, we could look into and get back to you.
Okay.
About the council now.
Yeah.
Was it daycare for children or doggy daycare? Because I remember hearing.
Yeah.
I don't think that that would qualify.
It definitely does not qualify, okay.
Well, it tells us something about how my brain works.
That's what happened when you had Sparky come to the media.
I will say, Kashi is part of our family and is considered one of our children, but...
I was wondering about that argument coming into use as well, so.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, council for Hansa Romero.
Oh, yeah. Vice Mayor McQuaid.
Probably a more ridiculous question. Could you give an example of employee housing? What, what is meant by that?
Sure. So my, our understanding is that this piece of legislation was passed to facilitate the ability of, for employees to find affordable housing by, you know, agreeing to live together in rural areas, in urban areas. We do not foresee that happening in a city like Albany, and we haven't heard of any requests about it. So I think it's more to accommodate perhaps agricultural, you know, agriculture workers and make sure that housing is accessible to them.
So, when I read it, I thought of Golden Gate Fields, which obviously is a moot point, and wasn't, the housing was not in Albany at the end, but does it have to be housing that's provided by the employer?
It's not a requirement that the, yeah. Housing does not need to be provided by the employer. Yeah.
All right. Go ahead, Councilmember Hansa Romero.
And, from my understanding, so this is removing any of the ADU references so that we can put back in the current code of ADU codes? And in doing so, because I'm often asked this with my regular job, some cities have chosen to provide ADU blueprints or models that they can kind of like take off the shelf. I think City of Oakland does, does that in their department. I'm wondering if we're going to eventually maybe have that as an option?
So, thank you. State law did require that all cities or jurisdictions have a pre-approved ADU program. The program does require that we set up the program, not that we provide plans. So at this point, we have a program available online, and anyone is welcome who is a designer and architect to submit plans for this program, and then it would run through our building permit, building plan check for consistency with code requirements, and then we would make them available to the public. And again, that doesn't mean necessarily free, but they'd be available for the public to view, to see if they'd like to contact the relevant designer and architect to hire them for that. We have not, as a city, as of, yet, hired anyone to prepare plans for our city to offer either for fee, free or at a cost.
Great, thank you for that. I just, it does come up a lot, and it would definitely help streamline that for a lot of people who might be interested in putting ADUs. And then also, if we could come up with something that would just be a basic kind of thing, I think that that would, that would help move that process along for some people. So if we get there, that'd be great. And then as far as the, you're talking about San Pablo and Solano, our business corridors, I know that City of Berkeley has been talking about the current state laws as, as high-level locations or locations where they could put in buildings that were taller than certain, certain height limits. Are we working along with Berkeley, talking about that?
We, we are always working along with Berkeley, but we're not a part, a partner on that program, so we, at this point, are, we're aware of what they are doing and watching what they're doing. We can be in, on our, our long range of tasks, is to look at corridor planning on Solano, and it might actually be helpful to have Berkeley go first and see, you know, how we could better align with that, but that will not be happening this calendar year.
Okay, thank you. I know they're running into a lot of opposition, so.
All right, not seeing any further questions from council. Do we have any questions from members of the public, comment? All right, bringing it back to council, we do have a city staff recommendation on the table, unless there's any further discussion at this moment.
I will move to introduce ordinance, oh, sorry, go ahead.
I'll be brief.
Okay. You don't have to be. People know I'm not, so.
Yeah, again, I really want to thank staff. I've consistently been excited and really appreciate all the effort that you all are putting into, I would say, not only keeping us up to date with state law, but also thinking about how we can refine our regulations to be both more legible and more equitable. So I particularly like the change from single-family to single-dwelling. That is, we try and get as many communities to do as possible. I love that staff just did it, didn't have to raise that one. I will also say that I appreciate efforts in walking us towards the ability to potentially have more than one or two units in, in our, our one-zone district. I would be super excited to talk to staff about some details that what I highly recommend we not necessarily follow in Berkeley's footsteps, maybe some minor tweaks to what they did, but other than that, I'm super excited about the amendments that you brought to us, and I'm excited to look forward to seeing and hearing about the ADU updates. With that, I'm brief and I'm done.
Thank you, Councilmember McKee.
Yeah, I was just second that. I've, for a while, been disturbed by the terms unit versus house. You know, so people who live in multi-residence buildings live in units, then there's those other people who live in houses, and I think there's some implied, maybe not even implied pejorative nature to those terms, so I really appreciate the differentiation between those being removed. So with that, I will move to introduce Ordinance 2025-07, with the modifications that staff has recommended affecting the removal of references to and changes regarding accessory dwelling units and waive first reading.
Second.
Beat you.
Beat me to it.
Thank you, City Clerk.
Vice Mayor McQuaid.
Yes.
Mayor Lopez.
Yep.
Councilmember Hansa Romero.
Yes.
Councilmember Jordan.
Yes.
Councilmember McKee.
Yes.
The motion carries.
Thank you very much, and thank you again, city staff. All right, moving on to item number 10, unfinished business, potential revenue measures for funding core city services. So we'll bounce it right back to city staff.
It feels like it's been forever since I've been here. I'm sure it hasn't been that long. It is my pleasure to be here this evening to provide you with a brief presentation regarding one of the potential revenue measures that was discussed earlier this summer as an option for, considering for the 2026 ballot. The item that is included in tonight's report is the, a potential change to or increase in the real property transfer tax amounts that would be charged for sales of homes within the city of Albany. Other items that were included in the summer's presentation on revenue measures will come back in individual pieces as those continue to be developed. The real property transfer tax is a general tax that the city has had in place for some time. Existing state law allows for all counties to have a real property transfer tax or documentary recording tax that is applied countywide for the sale of properties. Cities and counties can also split that. Essentially, it's 55 cents per $500 of value. Typically, a non-charter city, so a general law city, might have an agreement with the county. The county will get 27 and a half cents, we get 27 and a half cents. Terrific. That's not a very big revenue source. For charter cities, there is the ability to have individual jurisdictions adopt a property transfer tax at any level that the jurisdiction chooses to do so and that is approved by their voters. So, across the state, most charter cities of those cities that do have charters have some sort of real property transfer tax amount because it is, as you're well aware, one of the few really general revenue sources, property tax, sales tax, et cetera, and then, you know, there aren't, we'd be sort of run out of general things fairly quickly. And so the real property transfer tax is quite a valuable source for charter cities such as Albany. Prior to 2020, you're probably well aware, Albany had a transfer tax of $11.50 per $1,000 of value. In 2020, that was increased to $15 per $1,000 of value, and that revenue source brings in two and a half to $3 million a year. It is a very volatile revenue source because it really reflects the underlying strength or not of the housing market. And so, as with many other heavily economic-based revenue sources, it can be, there can be significant swings in, in those revenues, unlike property tax in general, which is a very slow-growing, very stable revenue source. Property transfer tax tends to be much more unpredictable, much more volatile, but in good economic times, that'll pump some money into the local economy or the local government revenues for certain. A number of, a number of cities in Alameda County and in Contra Costa County surrounding us have property transfer tax amounts. Those are included in your staff report. Many of them are a flat rate across all sales amounts, and some are a tiered rate, so a lower rate against lower-value home transactions or property transactions, and a higher rate against higher-value property transactions. So Berkeley has a tiered rate, Emeryville has a tiered rate, Oakland has a tiered rate, and just within Alameda County. So if the council wants to move forward with pursuing an increase to this, it could be structured almost in infinite number of ways. The, the, as I mentioned before, the real property transfer tax is a general tax. It is intended to be for general purposes. We don't earmark it or constrain that in any way. The recommendation would be that this absolutely should be a similar measure if we're restructuring it. It is a general tax, and it would be, could only be voted on at a general election. General tax, general election, special tax, special election, or primary. The one other risk that I would say, in addition to the potential volatility of the revenue source, is that there is an initiative that is being circulated for signature, which is terrifying, just to not put too fine a point on it. And it would affect every charter city in the state that has a real property transfer tax above the 55 cents per 500 in value. That measure would essentially remove any additional property transfer tax revenue above the 55 cents per 500 value. So not only would it potentially affect this if it were taken to the ballot at the same time, and that makes it to the ballot and it were voted on if it were approved, but it would also unwind what we existing, currently... it would also unwind what we existing, currently have in place. So it is a poison pill and then some in terms of an initiative measure. So CalCities is obviously very much engaged in paying attention to this because it is so potentially far-reaching. And it, you know, it is something to be considered in the conversation regarding whether or not this is a measure to consider moving forward with on the ballot, but the implications are so much broader than just whether or not this particular increase would be disallowed, that it's honestly a broader threat than just whether or not to go forward with this at this time. And with that, I would be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Do we have any questions from council at this time? Not seeing any questions. Do we have any questions or comments from members of the public? Not seeing any. Bringing it back to council for discussion.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, staff. I appreciate this, going to a more progressive tax structure, or a progressive tax structure instead of a flat tax. I would like to be more progressiveness. So I downloaded the last three years of residential transfers, property transfers, sales, be able to explore the numbers. And one model that I came up with that is, would generate an additional amount of revenue that's between the two amounts that are stated in the staff report, was to, and lower the rate to 1% for the first quartile of sales, which would essentially be condominiums. All the ones I looked at were condominiums with a couple of exceptions, which I'd actually ask colleague here about because I'm curious. And 1.5% for the second quartile, 2% for the third, and 1.5% for the fourth. And like I say, this came out with revenue that was about in between. My thought with lowering it for that first quartile is, I remember hearing some time ago that this tax weighs more heavily on people that are selling properties at a lower sales value and that are sort of relying on that property for their retirement. And given that, both the nature of money, essentially, you know, the less you have, the more each dollar's worth to maintain your shelter and your sustenance. And also the fact that income inequality, wealth inequality in our country is the highest it's ever been in the record of the Fed, can which Fed office or which Fed bank it is, but it has a measure that goes back to the 1910s on wealth inequality, and it's the highest now in our country it's ever been. And political scientists in researching have found bad things happen when inequality gets extreme, and I think we're seeing really bad things happen. And so for all these reasons, I'm interested in a more progressive tax schedule. I appreciate staff mentioning Oakland and Berkeley. I failed to, like, look into what they're doing, and I saw that Oakland actually has an interesting provision where it lowers the rate further for first-time, low- and moderate buyers of residences. And so that's something else that I'm interested in doing to make Albany more accessible and try to do what we can to maintain diversity and make what we have here more accessible to other people. So Oakland had a 1/2% discount. My thoughts aren't as formulated on that, but I just want to put that on the table. And then the question, my colleague here was, I saw a few houses that looked fine in every other way that were sold, that sold for less than $200,000. Have any idea what that's about? Yeah, in Albany?
Could have been a transfer between family members?
Well, that's what I'm wondering, yeah.
It may have been just a transfer.
Avoidance of...
Yeah, we don't have, I think probably one of the lowest sales recently of a single-family house was somewhere around $400,000. That was on Garfield, and that was a complete. And now there's a brand-new house there. I toured it today, actually. It's gorgeous. But, so, you know, most, and like, for example, you brought up the condos. The condos are very, they're getting less and less affordable for people because of, it's not just the condo itself, but you're paying an HOA fee that's somewhere around $900 a month to, on up to, I think, one's now at like $1,200 a month for some of the HOAs. So it's really a real sharp bite in somebody's wallet. The city transfer tax is usually split between buyer and seller, so it's usually a 50-50 tax. So each side gets hit on that. And, yeah, there's different cities. I mean, we have kind of like a cheat sheet from the title company that's telling us, you know, who pays what, where, when, you know, how much of it's put out. Some cities don't have any transfer taxes.
What I found for the quartile breaks, and the quartile breaks were fairly stable over this time period, which went back to 2022. So to your point, the break between...
Apartment buildings and stuff like that, then?
Oakland and Berkeley taxes were represented as having just a value cut, like a, you know, $1.6 million or whatever, just like, that's the cut. Does that change over time? Because I thought Berkeley passed one that was based on like a percentile or a quartile, and that the boundary would change as the quartile changed.
I didn't look at it again prior to this meeting, but I do think that Berkeley's has some escalator or some provision in there. I'd have to look it up to be able to tell you what it is, but I believe there is some escalator. We want to consider balancing that against sort of administrative and comprehension simplicity because we're running around, if the rate's changing frequently, I feel like that could be a point of confusion. So we just want to take that into consideration along with all of the other pieces that become part of this puzzle.
Yeah, and I...
Sorry, I just wanted, you know, because also with all this being said, it's just like, we're already notoriously high value in Albany. So just needing to keep things affordable, but also understanding that we need to pay for city services and stuff like that. It's going to be, you know, a balancing act. That's very difficult to do that, so.
And that's, I think that's part of why, like, tying it to what the market's doing, because as sale prices go up, then the lower band will stay low and the high, it will move with the market. And if the market goes down, it will move with the market, as opposed to just having hardwired sale prices. So I appreciate, you know, what's the balance between how often those get updated, what's the analysis that's involved in getting updated? I don't think the analysis part of it is that hard, but promulgating that there's been a change is maybe the harder part.
A question for you, Preston. Can you go back and can you tell us your percentages in dollar amounts? Essentially, multiply your percentage by 10.
Dollar amounts, okay, so...
Your percentage isn't multiplied by 10.
Okay, per thousand, so it's per $1,000 as the basis, so it'd be 10, 15, 20, 25.
10, 15, 20.
Or second, third, fourth quartile. So in that sense, it's at least a little simpler to remember. And then I am...
It's just easier to compare against...
Sure.
...the communities against dollars.
Yeah, and so, I mean, I think also, you know, not my motivation for proposing that it be lowered for the lower-priced properties, but I think that will also make it potentially more politically viable. Say, you know, we're both cutting taxes for some and raising taxes for others, and here's why.
Thank you.
Sure.
Into that, I want to circle back just, you know, one of the, I brought up this idea a long time ago. That's just a question, and it morphed into what it is now. Because the county assessor came to us and talked to when I was mayor last year. And in particular, they talked about LA, and LA did it at a break of 5 million to really say, like, and they actually made the jump from that third quartile to fourth quartile, like, they hit you hard. And what they were trying to say was, keep it under 5 million, right? So we can talk about this as a tax revenue generator, and it could be, but the LA approach was really saying, stop, stop the escalation of prices over 5 million. And there was a trend where it was amazing, the number of properties that sold just under 5 million. Now, that has picked up a little bit, but it's that idea that this can help this runaway train of what prices are selling for. People can still make money, right, selling their property, but it's really to kind of slow it down. And yes, one side of this is revenue, but I would argue that this is more about saying, I don't know what the number is in Albany, whether that's 3.5 million. We haven't had a house sell for 3.5 million dollars, but like, are we really telling people, if you start breaking $3.5 million, there is a big impact? Now, LA was doing specific things with the money. That moves beyond a general tax. That's, that is a major consideration because that suddenly means you need to get 2/3 of the voters to approve it. But that was not a revenue generator. That was a, it's going to get, well, sorry, it was a revenue generator if it was over $5 million, but that money was being put into producing or supplementing rents, either producing housing or supplementing rent. So it was seen as like, if you are in one of these $10 million houses on an acre, like, you are going to supplement providing housing elsewhere. So I just wanted to bring that framework around because we keep talking about it as revenue, and it could be set up to be revenue. It could also be set up to be revenue neutral based on where houses are selling today, and just say, but as we start to hit these milestones that are out there still, that might produce revenue. That's another way of framing this when we look at where these numbers land or where you pick your percentiles. The thing that I also have not seen any community do, and one of the things that I do professionally is work with communities to find all the possible levers you can pull to say, put more than one house on a lot if you want. You don't have to, but you could. And one of the things that was bouncing around in my mind, and I know staff is going to give me this look of like, you're making this overly complicated, but if this were on a per-dwelling basis, in other words, if you are willing to take your house and do an SB9 project and put another whole house on it, like, is there a way to make it that you are not penalized because your value might suddenly hit $3.5 million because you have two units now? But if part of our goal is production of housing, which can help keep things affordable, help allow more people to stay in our community, is it like on a per-dwelling basis, right? Because then it's like, if you take that $400,000 house and somehow manage to fit three units on it, right, you're not being penalized for suddenly having three units that's going to get you over $3 million, right? Again, this is super complicated. Someone's got to run some real math, but we can also think of this way, incentivizing people to build that ADU, right? Because one way of looking at this, as we talk about the change in these things, is if I build an ADU, the value of my house goes up. What if that puts me over a threshold? I don't want to do that, right? Like, there are so many hurdles already for people to want to build an ADU. Like, I don't want this to inadvertently actually make people decide not to build an ADU. So I want us, as we think about this, how we have something that, maybe you get a discount for an ADU, maybe it's a per-dwelling. I don't know which way to do the math, but my big concern is that we would actually disincentivize someone doing anything but a single-family house.
Well, and actually, that's, you know, because when you were basing the values of the homes, yeah, that was prior to them becoming a two-unit or a three-unit property because, yeah, that will change the value, could send things increasing up higher. So that's very, yeah, that's one of my concerns, too.
I will also throw it out there that the likelihood that many four-unit buildings would ever be built in Albany were single-family is pretty low. But I also don't want to disincentivize that duplex or the ADU, or perchance that fourplex that might make sense.
Well, yeah, thanks for the discussion of Los Angeles. I, not having looked into it, I didn't realize that there was a, part of the design was to add an incentive against sales over 5 million. I saw some headline, it made me think that that was an undesired consequence because it was reducing the revenue they were going to get. So I didn't realize in the ledger, like, record, they actually put there to cap the market, essentially, or try to cap the market. As I said, I'm not, I'm not keen on trying to cap the market in that way.
I mean, when they picked 5 million, it was, there was still a big gap between like a $3 million house and a $10 million house, right? So 5 million was picked because it was like an upper end of what the general houses were selling for.
Right.
And it just said, if you're above this number, you're going to help buy housing elsewhere.
Right. But I mean, again, inflation exists, and property prices go faster than inflation. So what are you going to do, you know, put the measure in front of the voters again? I mean...
Yeah, I don't know if they had an escalation.
Yeah, right.
I don't know if they had that.
Yeah, yeah. Thinking about the 1/2% steps, part of it was that, I think that's a small enough step that I don't see it as creating a substantial incentive or disincentive in that regard, particularly if somebody's, I mean, I suppose if somebody is contemplating building an ADU and then selling immediately, it might, but I don't know. I don't know how many property owners do that as opposed to building an ADU while they're still going to be there a while for their family members and/or rental income. And if they're doing that, I don't think 1/2% is not even going to enter their mind. So it was designed, and also I think with those steps, they're small enough that the likelihood of them bending the financial curve, how psychologically they could bend the curve, but if somebody actually ran the numbers, it's on the margin, I don't know, that would really make some, dissuade somebody from doing it. So those are my thoughts. I might have my expertise, but...
Preston, can you go over the rates again?
Yeah, sure. Yeah, so it was, for the first quartile was $10 per 1,000. So that'd be less than, currently, we're at 15,000.
Up to what level?
What selling price was the...
What to what? So you want to know? Okay, so I can tell you what the quartiles were in looking backward. So again, they didn't vary over time back to 2022 by more than $100,000. I'll just tell you what they were in 2024. They were $650,000, or that was the breakpoint between the first and second quartile. And then median was 1.19 million. Then the break between the second and third, so 75th percentile break, was 1.54 million. I was also interested to see that, I was really surprised that apartment buildings don't sell for more. I was really, I mean, I saw like, hit residence apartment buildings that sold for $1 million. I was, I never would have imagined that. So, yeah, so that was real education for me.
I'll just say really quickly, well, one, thank you, Councilmember Jordan, for, in the context of that as well, like, someone makes an investment and they don't want that to nip them in the butt years down the road. They also think we're a very different community relative to like somewhere like LA. If we were dealing with the same nuances as LA, I would be like, yeah, let's do, let's go with that option. All that just to say that I think something that moved with the market, one is a bit safer and not as aggressive towards buyer and seller. Also makes it far less challenging for families that are trying to transfer property between family. And that's something that's heavy on me. In my short time here in Albany, I've learned a lot about how deeply rooted people are in this community. And sometimes I've come across a couple of folks where they've expressed that it's been a challenge to... to, for some of their family members to remain here because of, you know, the transfer of property process and what comes along with that. So I don't want to get into the details of that, but I will say something that, again, is in the relative context, comes off as a bit more progressive and puts some sense of guardrails. And I know that's hard to contextualize, especially when it concerns the housing market. And I'm sure this is something that Councilmember Hanson Romero can definitely attest to. It could fluctuate even within a matter of seven days. I've seen some crazy things. So I think having these quasi-guardrails is something that moved with the market at least for our community some sense of protection. And I think that goes a long way. The bit that I put on the bike rack and said I would revisit about why I'm favorable and agreeable to something like this is because I've experienced firsthand, being the child of someone who's had to go through challenges of market not being the most favorable to them. And the recession hit and we almost lost our home. We were this close to being homeless. And as you can imagine, that's probably hard for a father of 12 to have to come home to that. Not saying like that meant he was selling his property at that moment or at that time, but if he wanted to. And, you know, it, being able to have, knowing that your, your leaders in your jurisdiction are putting it to the voters to allow the voters to determine whether or not they want to put some guardrails, while also maybe simultaneously stopping that train from running away. I think there's something, there's a lot to be said about that. And I'm agreeable to it and I'm favorable to it in the context of like, let's explore moving forward with that idea of other folks are agreeable to it as well. Because ultimately, it's gonna be up to the voters, not us. But we should at least give our community that option or any other option that folks want to propose here today. But I think right now, we are definitely trying to figure out ways to have something that net positive in terms of revenue generating and to support the fiscal health of our city. I think first and foremost, that's what we need to be focusing on. And if we can balance that while also protecting folks in our community who want to find a way to stay here, especially if there's a transfer of property between family members, I think that's important. I don't know if anyone else has anything further to say. I know Vice Mayor McQuaid's been over here crunching numbers like a true statistician.
I always have this feeling that simpler you make things the blur they are. And the easier it is to explain what we're trying to do. So with that in mind, I'm not saying you're wrong. I'm just not fully understanding it at this point. And you don't have to explain it again, but, so I'd wanna look at that a little bit more. You know, I, I hadn't thought about the idea of, at a certain point, and I don't know what that point is, that there's relatively heavy hit. You know, there's, I think there's little we can do about the cost of housing, really a lot of things. But at least this is kind of a symbolic attempt to at least let it be known that we understand that the price of housing continues to go up. And that does exclude a lot of people from being here. And it's one small thing that maybe we can do, or that we can do and we'll see what the results are. And I think you had a good point about not bringing something that would discourage people from putting in more units. And I, I'm not 100% sure how that would work if people sold their property and then someone decided to build two units where that would fit. But I think it's, it's worth thinking about. So I think, I'm not ready to say, yes, well, these are the numbers. But I do like those, those two parts or those three parts being part of it.
Yeah, are you?
I'm done, I'm sorry.
All right, I just, I didn't want to butt in. Preston, somehow I knew you were gonna come with quartiles. And, and I think, I think the quartiles in that analysis is really useful for painting a broad picture. I don't always feel like that's necessarily the most approachable to people. So if you use that as a launching point to say, for instance, if you said anything under 750,000, so we're going up a little bit, but we're giving a little breathing room there, we're dropping the transfer tax to $10. And if you were to say between three quarters of a million, so 750,000 to 1.5 is 15. So it's not changing, which frankly, for a large number of households in Albany, if you haven't done upgrades beyond, if your house is still kind of the house it was, it's still three bedrooms, one bath, you're probably close to that price range, right? If you've added more bathrooms or things, you're, I don't know, my gut feeling is you're above 1.5, at least from what I've seen. Then like you might say, the next quartile is, not quartile, the next grouping is 1.5 to 2.5. And then it's like two, above 2.5 or above three, whatever that number is. That's really just saying you are, you are so out there that you're gonna take a little bit bigger hit. And if you look at Oakland, Oakland's saying the lowest group is $10. Next is 15. That bump from, from that grouping to the next grouping is not a very big. It's 15 to 17.5. But when you go above that top number of that third grouping, you jump to $25. So it's like, there is this threshold that's just saying, hey, like if you, when you hit a certain price point, like there is a bigger hit you're gonna take. I don't know where that number is. Oakland picked 5 million. I don't know if ours is three, 3.5. We haven't had anything sell for 3.5 yet. So like, in some ways, picking a number that we haven't hit yet is kind of saying, there's a point at which, yeah, you can sell a house for $4 million, but you and the buyer and the seller are going to be a little bit bigger. I don't know that tonight we need to answer any of these questions. I think, I'm hoping staff was really looking for guidance or staff looking for.
Well, I'll just offer with that schedule.
Yeah.
Would not, I mean, run the numbers, but it would produce substantially less than increase in revenue.
All right, it would not be revenue neutral compared to the past.
I mean, it would, I think it would increase revenue, but it would be smaller than the, smaller of the scenarios that staff gave us. It'd be closer to neutral.
Yeah. So I look at it. If there weren't escalators, then over time, this would generate more revenue because prices are gonna go up on, on properties, right? I think it is a relatively easy sell to the community to say, we are going to this tiered system. And when you hit this max number, like, we're gonna get hit harder. Sell, sale's gonna get hit harder. But right now, we essentially aren't changing most people's taxes. Right, it is, it is neutral, but over time, it might increase it. I get it that we're also looking at this as actually filling some of our gaps, but.
Yeah, I mean, that's a major goal for me. So, yeah. It's not, not just restructure it. And, and I, I don't like the idea that eventually all properties would cross over to a higher, higher rate because then we're essentially losing the progressive.
Hoping more single-family houses turn into fourplex condos and
Yeah.
at a lower rate.
So, I mean, I, for the progressiveness, if the interest is with a progressive schedule, it also is the goal of generating revenue. I think the schedule boundaries have to move with the market, which is mostly up, but has occasionally been down in lifetimes. So yeah, I mean, it's, you know, in terms of how it's characterized, if it is based on quartiles, that's not necessarily where you'd wanna use in a, in a ballot question. Although again, I will note that like it's over 70% of people over 25 have a bachelor's degree and over 35% have a graduate degree here. So this is not an electorate that is like many other places in the country in that regard. So that's why I have more appetite for something that maybe is a little more nuanced.
I think maybe the discussion at this point is, do we want it to be revenue neutral? Or do we want to raise our, our revenue? And I, I would say raise our revenue. I mean, and if we're not gonna do that, I don't know why we're doing anything. But, so is it possible at this point? Do you have sort of a sense of what we want? And can we send it back to you or what's, what's staff's pleasure?
Sure, a few questions in terms of the direction we're going in. I just really want to reiterate, the whole purpose of this staff report was based on the City Council's strategic plan, which is the generation of revenues to sustain core services. So if that isn't the current focus, we would need to know that because that is an entirely different study and ballot measure. I would encourage us to stay on track with what the existing strategic plan has directed because that has, has driven staff work to date. And you will continue to see that work come forward in other conversations on revenue measures, which as you know, are highly complex and time consuming in terms of analysis potentially. I think we have enough conversation to run a few scenarios and give some pro-con analysis on complexity, implementation considerations and whatnot, so we could bring that back to you. I think ideally what staff would appreciate tonight is general concurrence that this is continued to be supported in concept and you would like to see more information come back. Okay? And then we will also look at the nuance potentially of more than one unit on a parcel. Probably with some support from our legal counsel on opportunities there.
Certainly. Yeah, because those lots can also be split now.
Right.
So that's also something to take into consideration as well. You know, lots of fun, huh?
My hesitance on the taking into account the number of residences is that there are a lot of larger apartment buildings or, you know, eight plexes, five residences. And at that point, they're more commercial enterprises. I mean, it can still be, you know, persons who don't own many residences, but it's really more a commercial enterprise at this point. And so I don't really see taking that into account on the sale price at that point.
Yeah, and, and again, I really want an economist, and I kind of know economists that I would want to ask a lot of questions, but economists don't do things for free. You know, I think from my perspective, even if it's just an exception for ADUs, because that is one that we already know in the last six years, something like 90 something had been built in Albany. And like, let's keep that trend going. And, because that's much simpler. It's like, is there an ADU on the property? You get a discount. And then we don't have to worry about how many units. Because you're right, if you get into a 50-unit building, like, right? And, and I will caution that, that I have an interest in a duplex, so. There's another caution. But if I were to look at this and ask my economist, I'd be like, well, what's a good breakpoint in between? Like, what makes sense for like, when would you just treat it as one big building? And when would you treat it to give a discount per unit? And all I know is the last time we went down this route, I had to recuse myself from all conversations. So if we just kept it to ADUs, we're in great shape.
I, and I'm curious if like maybe something that city staff can, can explore after, you know, taking this into account, maybe exploring the, the possibility of having some some tie-in language around maybe an application to apply for discount points. So maybe it doesn't, it's not so automatic. Because then I could also see that becoming problematic. I just wrapped. But I think that may be worth exploring as an alternative option. Because then it can be explored on a case-by-case basis. Was this a, did someone do this for a business enterprise reason? Or did they make a compound for their family and they want to bless someone else to get that on? And, so I don't know if that's possible and I know that probably gets a little murky.
You could look into it, but I'm concerned about the rationale behind, behind that distinction.
Yeah, and also just closing the escrow of the property itself and have to be something more of like a rebate process than, you know, because you're, you're dealing with all these closing costs at the end and you've got to come with a final number at the end of that. So
Yeah.
It could cause a lot of issues.
And I think we really, you just keep in mind, we need it to be simple, both to implement and to understand, and that we don't make staff crazy.
So I'm slowly warming up to the quartiles. I think the thing that bothers me is the breaks where the actual top quartile is. I mean, there is a difference a little bit, I feel like. The difference between any house that essentially has had improvements is going to be now in the top quartile versus the houses that are selling for $3 million. And so would we ever consider something like a quartile, but then there's like the top eight or the top five percent? Or like, there's that. Maybe we can buy another one, but there's one break where it just says like, we can point to voters and say, you, you know, like, it's $3 million, it's three point, whatever that number is. But it's like, because everyone, what I worry is as a voter, many voters are gonna see this and say, oh, wait, I'm gonna be in the top quartile. I don't feel like I am in the top quartile. Whereas like, if you have something that is really out there, at least you have the ability to say, look, like, I just worry about where those breaks end up happening.
I, I was surprised doing this, that, I mean, I had an expectation that basically every, you know, single residence property was gonna be, like you say, that much money. So I was surprised that wasn't the case. Now, my sense was everything in the first quartile was a condo, but everything between the second and third quartile was also a house. So I was pleasantly surprised in that it is a million dollars plus or minus, but that there were so many houses that were not 1.5 million, that that was actually the majority of the, of the single residence properties that were selling. So yeah, I mean, I could share, what, you know, I could share the other, other breakpoints that go higher up than that. I don't have that right now, but I mean,
Mostly just gauging if council has an interest in exploring either simplifying it to four where our quartile really is like super high-end or adding a fifth quartile.
Right.
I would, I would say I'd like to not get too far into the weeds on this and let city staff take it from here, knowing, hearing what we've said because we could beat this dead horse all night long. So I think she's got enough information based upon what, what we've been talking about, that maybe we can let them come back to us with something.
And I would offer, if you move the boundary for 2.5% up dramatically, then it's just gonna reduce the new revenue dramatically. And that's where most of the revenue is coming, is from the 2%, 2.5%, you know, increases, so.
I say for simplicity's sake, let city staff take the information that's been presented. I don't want to encourage them to start going to the top 116%. But I, I, I think, I'm pretty confident, I think we're all pretty confident at this point that they have more than enough information from us and they have a good temperature check on us and what we're looking for. And I look forward to what that may look like coming back. Hopefully, in, with the least complex, complicated language. I know that's gonna, that sounds like an oxymoron talking about quartiles. But if we, if we have confidence in the assessment of our voter base, hopefully we'll be in a good situation in terms of interpretation.
I'm, sorry. Well, before we wrap up, I just want to make sure. Well, before we wrap up, I just want to make sure that I state what we've asked staff to do, because we've kind of run in circles. Mostly because of me. If you had a comment separately, I always just wanted.
Well, yeah, well, I realize that the source I was looking at didn't have commercial, like purely commercial properties. So I don't know, there isn't a lot of purely commercial property. There were, you know, mixed-use and things like that, including this, but there was no commercial property in the data source I was looking at. So that is an unexplored dimension. I don't know if that should be a separate category. I don't know, you know, with its own, just that's the rate, no matter what the commercial property is, or if it should fall into the same schedule. I don't know if you have any, I mean, you don't work in the commercial market, so, but more familiar with it than I do. Do you do? Okay.
I primarily work with residential stuff. I, yeah, I, I just.
Is that stuff, information staff could get from the county assessor?
Yes. Most likely could.
Preston, you ran the last three years.
Yeah.
So, I'm just going to try and, this is not saying that this is what we're doing, I'm just trying to repeat what we talked about. So, going with the four quartiles at $10, $15, $20, and $25, I want to verify, do we want staff to look at a lower rate for first-time buyers and low-income purchasers, so a half percent, or $5 discount? I'm going to put it in dollars.
I think so.
Just want to verify that. And then one that I had asked about was potential for a discount for ADUs. And if we wanted to keep, I'm not going to say. I mean, we could make it the same. It's just a 5%, $5 discount for, if you have an ADU.
I mean, if, I would say, the first time the property sells with an ADU, like, it's not going to hit that discount forever. Because it's the, it's the entity that built the ADU.
That sounds like a trucking nightmare, though.
Yeah.
I agree.
City staff feel good with what is in front of you? All right.
Thank you, Mayor.
So I'm assuming at this point, then we have no action to take at this moment, correct?
Just the guidance is perfectly fine. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. So with that being said, I will close out item number 10, unfinished business. We have no new business. We'll move on. And thank you, city staff, again. Always appreciate. Voice of reason for us. Moving on to item number 12, council subcommittee report. And I will start on this side of the table with Councilmember Hansom Romero.
I'm just to reiterate all the wonderful things StopWaste.org is doing. They have been hugely successful in a lot of food recovery programs. I can't remember if this was spoken about the last time. But they, there's multiple programs, there's multiple events happening. And, you know, even when they send me the, the report summary update, there's so much information on there. I would not want to sit here and, and read through all of it. So I will still encourage you guys to, and anybody else who's interested, to go on to the StopWaste.org website, familiarize yourself with current events and programs that are happening, and stay in tuned and involved. There's a lot of great work going on. There's a lot of great agencies working together, and really encouraged by all the work that they've been able to, to put forward, so.
Thank you. Councilmember Jordan.
Yeah, I mean, likewise, the HSTH Commission has an involved agenda, but I'll highlight one, one item from the, the last meeting, which is that the, the commission approved various actions to advance the East Bay Greenway, multimodal north, the north segment of that project. For those that don't know, this is a long-term project the agency's been working on with all the, the partner cities and BARTs to develop a greenway that extends all the way from Lake Merritt BART, all the way to Fremont BART. This is a pretty massive project, and I think having, really benefited from having a greenway here on the, on the BART alignment, we can certainly appreciate that other communities have that as well. So, yeah, so it's, it's headed into some advanced work.
Thank you. Councilmember Mickey.
Attended a East Bay Cal Cities Division meeting, was re-elected to the board. Very excited about that. And we had a presentation that was, we were encouraged to have lots of sweets as the presentation was going on, because it was kind of a very dour, dour is that the right name? I'm not sure. Very pessimistic view on finances over the next five years. And it started off with, everything's in chaos. No one can tell you what's going to happen. But they said, it's not going to be rosy. The question of how not rosy. So, our conversation earlier, or conversation we just had about revenue, potential generation is, is a good one. Their recommendation, essentially to the leadership in the room, was start saving for your rainy day fund. Before you get impacted. That's my update. Sorry, I attended, I attended the Dinner with Albany as well.
So if they were looking five years out, what?
It wasn't particularly like five years out. It was just their trends are saying, don't. Vice Mayor McQuade was there as well. She may remember more details, but.
Just curious if you could name three of the trends, the top three trends that were problematic? If you can.
I do not have my notes, and I do not.
That's fine.
Thank you very much for your positive report. Vice Mayor McQuade.
As John mentioned, I also went to the East Bay Division meeting. I think I was in the chief seats, though. We, we couldn't hear a thing. So I'm glad to hear what happened.
You were just having a party back there.
Really? We're having our dessert. Anyway. On a more serious note, I, I did attend the memorial for AC Transit Director Chris Peoples, which was a really beautiful ceremony. Attended the Verona Hills opening, where the mayor represented us well. Coffee with the cops was interesting, because that was right when they were here, the people that were the burglars in the last event. I did attend our library board. We had a tour of the Union City Library. Went to the, forgive me on this one, Celebración Latina for the school district last Saturday, the Hispanic parent engagement group. The middle school, they had a big party. It was fun. And again, I can't thank you enough for dinner with Albany. People I was with have just had such a great time. I keep hearing about it, which is good. That's it.
All right. Thank you very much. And for me, similar to Vice Mayor McQuade, also attended the Verona Hills grand opening reception. Seen a couple of the familiar faces there as well. I just thought it was really dope to finally be in the space. I'd never been in there before. And just seeing the little rock climbing thing in the center of the courtyard. I was like, wow, yeah, my chief of staff would tear that up. The one at Ocean View Park needs a little tender loving care because of that guy. But it, it was also really great just to see some of our regional leaders there as well, and representing. Buffy Wick showed up. Our county supervisor, Nikki Fortinato-Boss showed up. We had representation from Congresswoman Latifah Simon's office as well. It was, it felt really great and heartwarming to see that, you know, our regional leaders, our state leaders, our federal representative, they're seeing what's going on in our small, little city. And I, and I say it a lot, like, small city, big heart, but like, I'm absolutely proud of like, what our city staff has been able to accomplish on all fronts, which is a good segue to my other event that I participated in, Dinner with Albany. And again, just can't express enough how proud I am of our city staff in making that happen, and how it made me look like the cool uncle. My, one of my sister-in-laws, she loves coming to Albany every weekend to hang out with my, my partner. My chief of staff has a cousin that's very similar in age to him. And they go, and they're up and down Solano, spending money I don't have. And enjoying our tot lots, enjoying our green spaces. And so being able to bring them to dinner with Albany with me as my guest, it was beautiful. And it was a great opportunity to introduce them to city staff that really make the place function the way it does. They got to run into one of my dear friends named Jaime. They also, and the reason I'm like highlighting their presence was because my sister-in-law ran into one of her friends from her teenage years in high school, back when she lived in Lafayette. And we found out that her old best friend lived right around the corner from Memorial Park. And they were just like, oh, yeah, parks here in Albany are great. I was like, yes. And then my sister-in-law was like, oh, yeah, you want to meet the mayor? He's my brother-in-law. So it was just, it was really cool to like, see those moments happen. But the bigger thing for me was just seeing community connect with each other, neighbors, meeting new neighbors and faces. This was something I, I said when I first took in my rotation as mayor, that I want to focus on community. Want people to, to feel safe where they're at. And, you know, this is why I give my applause to Albany PD, because they, they're making it happen. And that's why I say it's happening on all fronts with city staff, showing their commitment to our community. And there was reflection in that, in a celebration of life that we recently had for a very recent retired member of the Albany Police Force. And to be able to see that as well, and see the level of folk just showing up for, for one of our own. And again, small city, big heart, even though we're a super small department, we had folks from all across the Bay Area showing up. And it just, again, it made me really proud to see that. And then to hear the stories that I will not repeat. But it was great to see our now-retired police chief, John, there as well, and give some stories in his first day on the job. And so I really, it just, again, made me really appreciative of what we have in this, in this community. I wasn't able to attend the the Latinx Heritage Month Celebration at AMS. Thank you, Vice Mayor McQuade, for representing for us. I did make up for that by being a guest reader at Ocean View Elementary for the TK class. When I was about to leave, the teacher seen my nameplate and was like, wait, you're the mayor? And so it was just really cool to be able to interact with the, the young folks in our community. And then suddenly their eyes, you know, brighten up and they're like, oh, the mayor's here. And I'm shocked. I'm like, how did the TKs know what a mayor is? But, again, just speak to the power of community, the, all the things that go on and happen here, our educators as well, not just our city staff, but really being able to, to allow us to show up to different events and programming. You know, sometimes we get the, the applause for making the decision, but all applause always goes to city staff for making it happen. Especially as I keep swimming in my head and looking at the artwork and just thankful my chief of staff didn't damage anything. Someone definitely should check out the, the rock climbing section at Ocean View Park. But, yeah, I think that more or less rounds out what I'd been doing. Was not able to attend the most recent Ava Board Meeting due to major schedule conflict issues. But we'll be having a meeting in a couple of weeks. Our mayor's conference that was supposed to happen this week is also postponed, so we'll be in Newark in November. Newark gave a lot of promises that they were going to have something good for us. And so me and Vice Mayor McQuade were coming in hot, and we want to be, we want to be treated well. Oh, and it's Vice Mayor McQuade's birthday, so. And that rounds out our reports. Item number 13, do we have any requests for future agenda items? Anyone from the public?
Yeah, I would like to request, which I think was Councilmember Mickey's idea, to have a discussion about council's fund, whatever you want to call it, so that we act rather than react with regard to what's going to happen with that, if anything. At least have agenda items so we can have a discussion. And so I mentioned at a meeting before the break, having an ad hoc committee on the land acknowledgement. And I, I still would like add that on the agenda, because my hope is there's some things to navigate here, and I think we need to navigate those.
Definitely. Thank you. Do we have any?
Nope. All right. Moving on to item number 14, announcements and city events. As always, you can find everything on the city's website. And that brings us to adjournment. I will just adjoint this meeting in advance in saying, happy future birthday, Vice Mayor McQuade. But also, as we're celebrating birthdays, a very warm happy birthday to my partner as well. Allowing me to come to a council meeting instead of celebrating tonight, I'm going to be in trouble tonight. But with that said, close it out. Have a good night, folks.